This meeting is called the order. Can we have a roll call, please? Stuart Deborah Holgren here. Tony Pacheco here. Janice Chamberlain here. Sarah Smith here. Tim Morris here. Morgan Donaldson here. Greg Miller. Ellen Ayers. Nick Lanza. Kathleen Tonery. Arthur D. Johnson. Julie Lawrence. All right. First order of business is an opportunity for the public to speak. You're the only public, would you like to speak? We'll have another opportunity at the end of the meeting. We can start meeting with committee reports. Personnel. Personnel did not meet, but we need to schedule a meeting. Soon. All right, policy.
Policy met on Thursday. First meeting in a couple of months, we had a lot to get through. We received the first draft of the Freedom to Read policy. We have a draft of the cell phone policy that is out. There is also a staff pilot that's currently going on. We are going to receive feedback for that next meeting and then adjust the cell phone draft accordingly. And you can hear work on that. We received our second draft of the AI policy that's still in review within the committee. Our Student Equity Fund policy was pushed to the next meeting due to time constraints. And the grading and reporting updates. There is a draft survey currently being worked on that will go up to staff. It's something that we're going to review. There are going to be no updates this year, but it is something to look at for the future. Our next meeting is scheduled for February 26th at 5:30. Saying it's slow, but people understand it is an meeting that is open to the public. So there is no confusion about who can or cannot attend.
Thank you. And we're also looking for feedback, right? We're getting some more feedback on that.
We have drafts, we have surveys.
Right, surveys going now. And we're going to see copies of those surveys as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any questions for policy? All right, finance. Finance did not meet, but we're just. All right, curriculum.
Curriculum met on January 8th. And we had a presentation from Dr. Lauro on the curriculum. And we had many questions. We actually didn't have a quorum at that meeting, but we decided to have it anyway, meet it anyway. And because Dr. Lauro and several others were there at the same time. And then we heard an update from the English department, from Steph, on the reading interventions. And she broke down how those interventions are going and who's receiving the interventions. And just explained, explained more about that. So we're in the process of finalizing a meeting for the end of Jan- February.
And questions for curriculum? All right, building committee.
Building met just prior to this meeting. Your agenda's included. As is our sort of top topic right now is future locations for Star and Ubo. We've shared that in the past. We have our sort of ruling list of site candidates. Current one is associated with the location that the Star program is currently leasing. That, that school, we have some limited horizon to lease there. It looks like we'll renew for another school year, but we could be out of there as early as somewhere 27. There may be some portion of that land that becomes available. So we're looking at that as an option, it would be a build. So we're in really early stages of reaching out to the Department of Administrative Services relative to some early sort of student to square footage ratios and things. Just to get our heads around kind of the feasibility of that as a build. And then we'll be bringing, putting together a bit of a comparison relative to, you know, the liability. If we didn't have a star program, the star program continuing to lease. Or, you know, potential facility and then the debt service associated with the bonding of that. To kind of give a first comparison of different tasks we might take for, for that. And it might, you know, sort of settle that, that question early for us as we get into more detail. So that was the bulk of that, or the framework for positioning that, that is an option. HPC and indoor air quality, again, ongoing, ongoing topic. We have the, essentially the report ready to post, which is something that is an obligation we have. Post the findings as well as the status of resolution of the issue. So we're to the point of having completed mitigations, all the mitigations that we can do in-house, we'll say, right? With maintenance staff we have. So, so we're sort of like, okay, there's the point. Here's the list. This is what we've been able to do. Anything else is going to have to become with a budget, you know, associated with that. So that's where we are now to say, okay, well then, what of the remaining? And it's a big number and we've shared that in the past is, okay, what are those things we feel are compelling or required from the air quality perspective? So that's kind of the next peel back from that. We'll be posting that up to the website here coming up. And before we know, when, when that goes up. To kind of set, you know, what's been done, what's left to be done based on initial audit sometime ago.
Any questions? A lot of work to be done there for sure. All right, EDJ.
EDJ did not meet, but will be meeting on February 12th here at six o'clock. Again, it's open to anyone, not just.
Yes, more than. More the better.
More the better.
More the better there. All right, CEO and Faith. She likes to read your student report.
Yeah. So I don't know if you guys know this, but the first semester just started. So soon students are going to start meeting with their counselors to determine what their classes for the next school year is going to look like. And also with this new semester, some juniors were able to get access to yellow cards, which is really nice.
Yeah, the SED is coming up for juniors. So everyone's getting ready for that. And NHS is hosting a study session. The date is still to be determined, to be determined, but it's going to be like probably a week or two before. And then also emails have been sent out to lots of students, I think the entire student base, not just students in the board. About the role, the opportunities to help interview the new assistant principal. So that's exciting that a lot of students have been talking about that and like coaches have been forwarding it to their athletes. And I'm really surprised by the amount of engagement that's happened, so.
A pep rally is also in the works for sometime in March. There are two seniors who are in charge of it and they have it all planned out. There's committees and then there's subcommittees. So this is going to be really great. And the theme is Rio de Janeiro, so.
Can board members come?
Of course.
The track and field team at the, so for the weekend, sorry, at the Central Connecticut Conference Championships, they play second. So that's exciting.
Should say we play second, right?
And then also this past weekend, the Drama Club was able to put on a production called The Music Man. It, there was a production every night, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. And I didn't go to it, but I heard it was really good. And I also heard that the Drama Club is preparing a whole nother production sometime during the spring. So I would look out for that.
Very good.
We had two proposals for, I think I talked about this in the last meeting, for talks about microgressions in the M word. So we have submitted those to Niasc and we're still, I think, waiting to hear if they're going to be approved. But yeah, that's still up in the air. So it's exciting, but we got all those done and submitted, so.
And then lastly, students are part of the BSU, the Black Student Union. Were invited to go to Farmington High School for their HBCU event. And it's essentially when a bunch of alumni from some of the greater HBCUs in the country come to talk to the students about what they can expect. And also get like a perspective of what it's like going to an HBCU. And that's happening later this month, so.
And that acronym stands for?
HBCU.
Yeah.
Historically, black colleges slash universities. And that's all we got.
Any questions for our student? Anybody making to the program this weekend? Wow.
Very good.
It was outstanding. How they remembered all of that dialogue.
I know.
And the dance so quickly. It was absolutely amazing. And the dancing. It was terrific. All right, thank you so much. All right, you want to do the special report?
Yes.
All right, Dr. Green. From our science department, Director of Science.
I guess.
Ready, ready?
Yeah, that's true.
All right, good evening. I'm Bill Green. I, it's my fifth year here in the state. Spent seven years as director of Ubo and I'm looking enough to be back here as the director of science. So I just want to start real quick with a why. Why, why science? Scientific literacy is essentially health, economic growth and environmental security. And science and technology skills are also in growing demand as reflected in projected job levels. So there's a job level going from 232 and STEM, science, technology, engineering, mathematics and really occupations like healthcare. If you get to rise faster than other occupations, you can see that bar there that's going to call scientific literacy, science and engineering. The second bar there is includes health fields that's closely related. And then non-STEM occupations in this respect. To non-STEM units. So we need to provide. We need to provide students with an engaging and challenging curriculum backed up by sufficient support. So just some quick stats, students at USMIP are engaged in science. Students at USMIP are engaged in science. Nine hundred and eighteen student force in science for semester one, 2025. That is approximately one percent student on average. Twenty-four unique science courses in semester one, 2025. Forty-nine percent of seniors enrolled in science starting S1, which is remarkable because only two credits of science are required to graduate. Greater than nine hundred individual science academic study hall sessions have been assigned in semester one. That's kind of our hallmarks that we're going to talk a little bit more about. Hundred and eighty students enrolled in Yukon ECE science courses in semester one. And last year, seven hundred and ten Yukon science credits, credit hours. So our objectives for the coming year in science, strengthen systems for identifying and suppressing struggling students. Optimize science academic study halls, which are our SASH, to align with student schedules and their classroom teachers. Refining course pathways can increase access to physics and career-related courses. And revise our anatomy CC and physics CC for relevance and accessibility. I'll talk more about each of those. One part of supporting students is to help them build confidence belonging and reason in science by recommend. So last year we started the science studio in one. These students are recognized for effort enthusiasm for science, improvement, performance, effectiveness, creativity and other attributes. These are our first four this year to be just awarded. Last one Oliver Smithson this week for December and January. And a new student support initiative this year means weekly tracking of student performance and support. Which allows us to more effectively identify and put in place interventions to those students. Teachers receive these weekly reports concerning students and interventions that are already put in place. They can more effectively plan what is being planned to be predicted to this come by email. Grades of their struggling students, these who are generally are going to start out as students that hit sixty-five or under, show up on this list and they'll start tracking. These are the SASH dates that were assigned, student center referrals through the ring.
Sorry, did you have a question?
Yeah, so we're missing that last slide in the package.
Oh, sorry.
That you're on, that table. So can we get a, can we get a copy of that? Just sent out. No, the last one.
I smacked this.
It looked like a good slide.
It is a good slide, that's why I raised my hands.
Thanks, we'll get that to us.
Thank you.
So SASH has become a hallmark of our support system for the last several years. Science teachers, as I mentioned, have assigned their nine hundred SASH sessions this semester alone for reassessment, makeup work and remediation. For students in decline, so as you can see in this previous slide, you know, it sort of looks like a correlation between increasing numbers of students assigned to SASH and decreasing numbers of struggling students. Which you're seeing here in the blue line is students under sixty-five, red line is students under sixty. But it is hard to really parse that out, exactly what's going on there. But one thing that, that I think you can see, if we look at the fourteen students, fourteen students on this list whose grades were declining before their first SASH assignment. Then there's a first SASH assignment after their first SASH assignment. Some of them had multiple SASH assignments. You see that SASH appears to help stop the decline in their grades. Now this, you know, it's not statistical test here, it's just a graph, but it does look like it might help. Another thing we need to find in the science, that student student repeating SASH blocks with their classroom teacher when possible. So the student goes to a SASH, not just with any teacher, but with a classroom teacher. You put that on a repeat schedule. And this seems to have a beneficial impact. So the red is students that do not have a repeating SASH. These are all the struggling student list again, students that have less than sixty-five at some point. And then the blue is the students assigned repeating SASH. So it does look like the smoke is a little bit steeper out of the blue. It's also a little bit better fit statistically, R squared of point eight eight, which means it is, is telling us that it's a pretty good relationship. That this description is, is describing, it's pretty close. So that's our repeating SASH that we're trying out. Now staffing during every block across the week allows the support to be available to all students. So we have every single block of every day of the week staffed by a science teacher. And that's essential because it makes sure that it is accessible to every student regardless of their schedule.
Just a quick question, like with the SASH supports to, to kind of go back a little bit, you said like there are fourteen students. Is that, like, how many students are getting SASH reports? Because that's different than the individual SASH assignments. So I was just like, yeah.
So we go back here, the yellow line is actually the number of students assigned to SASH. Now however, this is only among the struggling students. So this was, and you can see the numbers here. So at the beginning of this, when we first started the system in September, when I first started tracking this, we had somewhere around eighty students with sixty-five or less science courses.
I understand.
So this is not, we're not, this, this graph is not tracking the total number of students taking SASH.
Right.
So the nine hundred does include all students. So that would be students who are going fine in their classes and just using SASH as reassessment.
Thank you.
So we're working on aligning these SASH blocks with students' lab blocks. So that it's more possible for them to have a SASH with their classroom teacher. So if the SASH block falls within a student's lab block, it's more likely for them to be able to get in with their own team. We've already started that process. This is our new semester two schedule, which lines that up. Maybe that is, we've got about eight more teachers now who are teaching during their, I mean, having a SASH during their lab blocks. It's the other thing we're focusing on in terms of refining our pathways. So our previous possible course sequences look like this. Lot of choices given to students at each grade level. The one we're moving toward now is we're trying to shift toward a new model that makes our pathways more explicit and gives students more guidance and nudges them toward pathways that you think are going to help them gain skills that they need. So let's look at this. We've got option A, comprehensive foundation for college pathways. So the student who doesn't necessarily know what they want to go into, if they want to go to college. This one's going to keep a general foundation. And we have allied health pathway, which is already well underway or developed. And then we have the engineering manufacturing pathway, which you can just kind of get assigned in science. This is the comprehensive preparation for college pathways, for college pathways. Now one of the things you can notice on S is we are now recommending physics as the default option for all juniors. Regardless of level, this does not mean it's required, but it's recommended. Now that's not something we really did in the past and I'm going to explain why we're doing that moving forward. And we're continuing to offer an engaging selection of lectures as we build the stuff. Now, in our pathways, our pathways look like this. We've got allied health pathway, and then public pathways, which is, right? And the engineering manufacturing pathway. For students selecting allied health or engineering, what we're doing is providing more explicit guidance of what to do after physics. So now, if you're interested in allied health, womb, there's our list of allied health-related electives and engineering, same thing. We are working on revising our anatomy CC. Do you have a question?
When you're done.
We are working on revising our anatomy CC to make it more targeted at this kind of group of careers, to make it more practical. We have a new engineering course that just started this semester. Introvert Engineering, it's a survey of various engineering fields. And first we still have our popular forensics course that Mr. Arnd created. There's five sections of that running this year. And we have a list of our grade electives as well. These rich pathways are supported by a broad range of teacher expertise in our department. Yes.
So I'm inferring a correlation across from your grade boxes to the courses over here.
Yes.
So that essentially it's the same path until grade twelve?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the earliest point where there's essentially any other than one path.
Right now, again, this is.
I didn't mean to undermine your point, but.
Yeah, it doesn't fit well on one single.
Yeah, right.
Slide or map. But again, this is, these are all levels. And this is what we are recommending, it's not applied. You know, this has been communicated guidance as well, maybe same thing they're, they're giving to students, we recommend this. Not required.
Is physics a prerequisite for all the courses below?
No.
Okay, so they can take those potentially early.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right.
And we do have a lot of students who just flip these two and take physics as seniors. Nothing wrong with that either. So this is just the recommended pathway. We consider it the default. And then they can opt out of the default, of course, if they want to. Now, why? Why are we recommending? Well, physics carries a large share of work, not next generation science standards, concepts and skills that connect across the system. Without physics, students, students miss cheap pieces of a complete science. Most students do not get exposure to physics or science. So look at this graph, oh, sorry, look at this graph. If we consider students taking bio, it would be a hundred percent of the students. And there's eighty-seven percent, physics forty-five percent of our students taking physics. And then these are our two earth science electives in semester one, fourteen percent of students took. Those are great science electives. And then sixty-two percent is our other. Look at the NGSAs standards. Twenty-eight percent of the NGSAs standards are only covered in physics. Another eighteen percent are only covered in earth science. So not in bio and natural physics. You combine those two, if the student misses physics and doesn't take our new earth sciences electives, they're missing forty-six percent of the NGSAs. Our total physics students this year is a hundred and fourteen students in physics CC is thirty-two. So students not taking physics are mostly CC level students, mostly students taking CC level courses. This is not as much of a concern for our, our students who tend to take honors level courses because most of them are taking physics. Yes.
So going back a couple of slides, if you're taking one science course each year to the, the, or Tim had a question, the.
Pathworks.
Yeah. So if you're taking one science class a year, up to how many electives can I take? Could I just take bio and then do electives for all three other years? What is?
You could with our current graduation requirements.
So that would be an option.
I don't think we separate out and say physical science, some schools, many schools do. But we don't have like a physical science requirement.
So none of those electives have any prerequisites?
Well, that's not necessarily true. Some of them might have some prerequisites, like intro engineering, a lot of my things is a prerequisite, Tommy current recommended where. Requirement. The only other, the other drive, big driving factor for a lot of students is lab courses. So you notice all three of these are lab courses. Anatomy is lab course. A lot of students are going to want at least two lab courses for college applications. And three is even better, depending on what school you're looking at. So that alone is going to drive many students to take biology, chemistry, and then even physics or anatomy. Yes.
So AP research is also in here, is it on the list?
AP research is not a science credit. I will accept a special permission if they have.
I thought it was. Oh, interesting, okay.
Thank you.
Is it math? The, is that where you would see the AP research, AP research as math or just an elective or a?
I, I did some looking around at some schools. It really varies. I mean, I think I saw English, I've seen some schools offer it as kind of a separate thing as part of like the capstone project. I haven't seen any schools offering it as part of science.
I thought Ms. McHann who taught it.
Yes.
So, but she teaches it outside of the science classes.
Yeah, so here's just an elective.
Yes, okay, thank you. Yeah, they can, students can request to get science credit for it and we will discuss that. We've included, like, we have one student right now who's actually doing a science project with Mr. Swanson. And that is part of further. So they're doing this therapy with Corals and so she's going to get a science credit. But it's more, it's almost like, it's kind of an independent study style. Now, as far as NGSAs scores, we are in line, these are just. Sorry, yes.
Just a question. Is there a reason why the, you know, AP researchers couldn't be incorporated as science credits? And if you did it in, in language arts credits for that discipline and so forth? They're just too unmanageable or?
Well, I think, you know, a lot of, it depends on what projects the students are doing. I mean, some of their, some of their projects might not have much to do with science. And so, you know, I've, I've seen schools in, in, right now. It's, it's just about research, so it's not necessarily about science. So this is where we line up with the state and with DIRD, which is the current DIRD. We're right about average with our NGSAs. Now, if you look at Eastern credit, so if you look at our DIRD, sort of, you can, we are suddenly trailing our peers in national theory. You see the, the orange highlights here are the two schools. in Eastern Connecticut, DIRD, that, that are a little bit lower than us. The rest are a little bit higher than us in N G S S. Performances. Now, students with, in CC-level science tend to have their N G S S scores. These students in H L, we can see this histogram here showing us the CC-level students are in blue. The H L's students are in red. So there's not, you know, not 100% correlation, but there's a tendency for lower scores in the N G S S. Yeah, scores are along the way. It's the X-axis here, it's on the bottom left. Now, what we're doing here is I'm just, I'm explaining why it isn't pushing physics, especially to the CC. So the percentage of our students who are above standard in earth, science, and physical science, this is on the N G S S test, is a bit lower than natural science. So if you look at this slide, this set of columns here, the blue and yellow are earth and physical science, the red is natural science. These are the students above the standard that come on the meets on these tests. So you can see there's a little bit, a little bit lower there, and you can kind of see how those students are replaced over here, right? So there's a little bit more approaching standard in those two areas. Now, this gives us an idea of, we could suggest that maybe even more emphasis in those two areas. So, summing it up, in the short term, you want to continue offering convenient science courses and pathways. You want to increase the number of students taking physics, especially CC-level physics. We want to continue the current S A T model and moving up the pennies for repeating S A T with students, classroom teachers wherever possible. And launch, increase the number of different space science in our curriculum. Now, that could be by adding new courses for and/or infusing those things into existing courses. Continue infusion of N G S S skills into all curriculum. Continue to build our career pathways. So what we're building here in Science E Smith is a coherent system of high expectations and high levels of support. Scientific literacy for all students through engaging courses focused on next-gen skills. Preparation for college and careers, high-demand course pathways, supported by a broad range of speculative graphics. Everything you've seen tonight reflects our focus on building a coherent, responsive science program that serves students well now, that is, that is. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ove. Go physics.
I just want to say, Bill has been the director for his first year as director, and he has just come in and given ground running. Looking at his data and really analyzing and really looking at shifts that make some substantial differences for students on that stuff.
Awesome. All right.
Health and P E.
Yeah. How are we doing, everybody? I'm rolling under shine, hoping to be the bar of the head. I'm going to walk you through, essentially, I, I have three main goals here. So the first thing is I want to give you a look at what it looks like for students to come through our program. So from the ninth grade, that's your interest. What does that look like? What are their options? What classes are they taking? More, are they taking those classes than, right, all that sort of stuff? Then we'll get into sort of what our goals were for the year, what our progress has been, and then fitness testing information. It's fantastic. It's very exciting. We actually have made significant improvements. However, while we have definitely done some things, part of that is also the state starting to figure out what they've been doing is stupid. And so it's a combination of the way the things are measured and also the changes that we have made. So we look like we have done some really incredible stuff, and we've done some sort of incredible stuff, and then the state also responded. So I'll just walk you through, walk you through all that. Okay, so as a ninth grader, when you come into E O Smith, you basically are going to take one P E nine, nine class, and you're going to take one freshman health class. So you have a semester in P E, a semester in health. And so in that freshman P E class, essentially, we're laying the foundation for everything else that's going to happen in the building. So when you're older, you get to choose your P E classes. And so we are essentially saying to you when you come in, we want you to have a bunch of different experiences as a freshman, so you can know what you want to do, or at least have an idea, right? So they're coming in and they'll have a couple of classes of yoga. They'll get in the weight room and you know, we'll take some hikes, or we play some different games. So it sort of depends on the makeup of the class, but we also want them to see what it's like to come into high school. What are our expectations in a P E class? What's it like for you to interact with people, right? So it's all that sort of stuff. So we're basically laying the groundwork for for what P E is going to look like for them by giving them a little bit of everything as freshmen. And so, I don't know if you can, well, you have this in front of you, but in the ninth grade years, also we do our fitness testing. There's a specific reason for that for us, because we don't really see the whole of any other class in any given year, the way that our program is set up. And when we start talking about fitness testing scores, I'll explain what other schools do. I'll explain how it's measured. I'll explain the jump that we've made, where that puts us, and you know, I'll get into that a little bit. So the other thing is we have these sort of end-of-semester summits in all of our classes. So basically, at the end of the semester, we have this week where there might be exams happening in the building, or projects, or culminating things. Yeah, we are a semester-based class. And so essentially, our freshman class ends with the P E nine Olympics. So they split up. They're doing all sorts of different stuff. So they're having competitions on how long your team can hold a plank, or how long they can keep a volleyball in the air. They make up a relay race. That's whatever they come up with. My classes come up with some ridiculous stuff, and that's awesome. And every time, it's just ending it with, with some fun. And so they get graded for just participating in the event. And that's been developed over the last couple of years. It's been a successful end of the semester for us. They may have our, our health class or health non-class. So the way that the state of Connecticut asks us to teach health is interesting. So there's a couple of suggestions that are made. But one of the things that, that is suggestion is, and I think we agree, is that there are specific skills that students should leave high school with. Knowing how to do certain things, and that those skills should sort of be the driving force behind health education. And so what we decided to do as a department, because we value a lot of things, and we have them twice. So we have them as freshmen, and then again as upperclassmen, is we have basically transitioned our freshman class to be a skill-based class. Meaning, we're taking a lot of the things that the state is saying, we would like to happen somewhere in their health education, and we're introducing it into the freshman class. So you can see what the skills are, self-management, how do you take care of yourself? How do you recognize when you're stressed? Do you allow it? Analyzing influences, who are the people around you? What are, what are things that are influencing you? Are they influencing you in a good way? Right, all that sort of stuff. So they're all the things that we would always teach in health anyways. They're just put under a different umbrella, and we're teaching them as skills. So can you do this skill? And then when we measure it at the end, it's measuring, can you, you know, how can you reflect on that? Do you understand what this means and how you would mute it? So accessing information, obviously, a very important skill in today's society. How do you know the information you're getting is good? That's, that's an important one. Communication, decision-making, goal-setting, and advocacy, which is like, when you care about something, how do you take that and advocate for it? And so that also shows up in our upperclassmen's class as well. That one fits well with the upperclassmen. And then that one ends with our final reflections. So we're big on the idea of, okay, explain to us what your takeaway is here. So at the end of the semester, they're focusing in on what were your big takeaways? Why did they, why did that matter to you? How can you see using this in your high school years or beyond, all that sort of stuff? So they, they sort of choose from a, a whole bunch of options, and they reflect back on their semester and how they can see health going forward. We also do a lot of guest speakers during that freshman year. So we have Dave Kapleski runs the Explorers program, comes in, he does first aid and CPR with them, and he's just fantastic. Dave Tanner comes in and talks a little bit about not just the idea of addiction and how he's seen it impact people, but the, the relational, like the relationship aspect of that. One of the things that he has, I think it's really good that he comes in, first of all, in the position he's in, he's basically just dealing with punishment all day, every day. It's a crappy thing to have to do. So when he can come in and talk to them like humans, they get to see a different side of him. And I, and I have heard from him that that has positively impacted some of the interactions he's had. When those kids sometimes show up in his office later, there's already something there beyond just, now we're going to talk about punishment. But he's talked a lot about the idea of what it means to be a good friend. And you don't bail on your friends when something crappy happens, just because you might get in trouble. And he's a great person. I'm talking about that position he's in. So he comes in and talks to our freshmen about that. Hans comes in and talks about gun safety. The state of Connecticut is requiring that gun safety shows up in health classes. I certainly do not feel qualified to talk about that. But it has turned into basically the number-one way teenagers are dying in the United States. And the idea of like, why is that? That's crazy. Most of us didn't even know that was the case. What does that mean? Right, what do we do about it? How do you safely, you know, store guns? And the state of Connecticut has laws, and the area is all this stuff. So Hans comes in and talks with the freshmen about all of that. He does just a fantastic job. We are blessed with really talented people around, and we're not shy about grabbing them and bringing them in, and it's worked really well for us. So that's sort of what a freshman year will look like. Okay, tenth grade, tenth grade with some, you know, new exceptions here and there. Those kids are not having a rough class. That shows up again when you're eleven, twelve graders. But at this point, now they're gone through their freshman P E class. Now their P E from here on out is just selectives, right? So we created these a while ago. These are the ones that are running currently. We've got a number, a number of other classes, self-defense, some other stuff that's not currently being offered, but we've offered in the past. So they can, we're big on having you leave high school and say to yourself, okay, some of the stuff I did, I can see myself continuing. Right, this I liked, this I liked. Not everybody wants to play full-court basketball or football or whatever. And so kids will take yoga classes or team sports if they're a little more competitive. Outdoor pursuits was something we came up with after COVID. We did an awful lot of hiking. So it's a hiking class, and that, actually, one of our teachers' goal now is turning that into even more, they're they're measuring the dates of trees, and they're learning to oriente here, which I don't think that is, but basically use compasses to, you know, find find the way around the woods and stuff like that. So we have a unified P E and health class, and then also the other two days a week, there's a unified leadership class. So that's being taught right now. Cass Rowett is teaching at Eastern, but she comes here for that class. And she teaches it with Taylor Hall, who will eventually take this class over. And so it's four days a week, split into two different classes. So you have the unified, and they're doing all sorts of stuff, and they're doing some health as well with the unified kids. And then the kids who are helping with unified class meet twice a week, and they're essentially helping to prepare, plan that class, prepare, sort of learn what it's like to, you know, do all of that. So there's multiple things happening at once. We're really proud of that program.
Fran, can I, just for a second?
Sure.
Does everybody know what unified is?
Yeah.
Yeah. Good question.
Well, I, I don't expect that if you're not here in the high school, you necessarily got to know that. I'm going to just do it. Unified implies a class that combines kids who have special ed plans and kids who don't in whatever the activity is. And the school has many opportunities for that, but that's what that means relative to P E.
Yeah, well said.
Thank you.
Yeah, adventure P E, we have, you know, the, the E O Smith Foundation really helped years ago to help us build a rock wall. So we have a rock wall in the back gym. It gets used. We'd like to see, see it be used even more, to be honest with you, but we have classes that are set up specifically around team building. And adventure team, adventure P E is basically a, a team-building class. And so eventually, it sort of culminates in rock wall, and they learn how to belay each other and communicate. And Katie Dobrath does a fantastic job with that. Sports performance is basically an exercise class. So they come in, they figure out what their goals are, we help them create workout plans, and then they work towards those goals. So weight room, aerobic stuff, whatever, it's like ability goals. Lifetime sports is sort of like, you know, things like, we're going to go for a walk, we're playing backyard games, or playing badminton, we're playing pickleball. Things that might not be super intense, but they're things that you should learn about in life. And as pickleball picks up steam, this sort of, you know, I've got stuff out there playing. A kid approached me last week about starting out a pickleball club for students. So we got all sorts of stuff happening around these sorts of sports, these activities. And then ultimate games and racket sports, so badminton, pickleball, frisbee, that sort of stuff. That's a tenth grade. You have a question? Okay, eleventh and twelfth grade. So you got a lot going on here. You've got selectives again. And so essentially, once you're done with your freshman P E class, and I didn't even learn this until last year, we thought every single kid, every single student would be taking freshman P E, but we learned last year that's not always the case. So there are some exceptions to that. We learned it through the fitness testing. So, but it's a good thing to learn. And then after that, they basically will find P E and take it whenever either the thing is available or it can fit into their schedule. So there's a lot of flexibility. We've, we changed P E and health for a variety of reasons, but one of the reasons we went to this model also is it creates schedule flexibility for students to be able to do all the things that they want to do. It was important. I mean, it's help people. That's a thing we would want. So all the same classes, the end-of-semester summits. So I mentioned the P E Olympics. All of these classes have come up with some sort of end-of-semester something. So there's a yoga presentation where the kids are teaching each other different things. There's a team sports, the kids get together and create a game, and they teach that to the class, and then they, they run that at the end. Everything has got a different thing where there's reflections and sports performance. There's, you know, a goal that they're trying to reach, and then they will teach an exercise to the rest of their classmates or stuff. So we're combining sort of like just knowledge, but also the ability to communicate with people, and there's a lot, there's a lot of things that we're after there. And then there's our health and wellness class. So I guess I would call that sort of our, our bigger picture class. So we laid the foundation with the skills for the freshmen, and now it's like, okay, now what does this mean, right? So how does health impact society? What's happening around us? How does this impact you when you leave? You know, 10, 15, 20 years from now, what do you want your life to look like? What sort of, if you want it to be a happy, healthy life, that's a much harder skill than it maybe was 50 years ago. What are, what's, what's the plan for that? So we go through, you know, all these different topics, right? Stress, and stress management, values, and culture. And culture is such a big part of what, what sort of holds us together. So people think of culture as just like your background, but it's your age, it's, it's the activities you're in, it's all the things. So when kids create projects about that, and they share with each other, it changes the way that they view each other. And so I think it's a really good lesson in that sense. And, you know, there's obviously bigger picture lessons there. Technology and social media stuff. This is fascinating time to be talking about this, not only what's going on in our school with our phone pilot, which I'll talk about in a bit, but, you know, Australia is banning social media for everyone. As Spain is looking to ban social media for people under the age of 16. It'll be very interesting to see how this plays out. I think we might have reached a low point. Like, it's possible we may have reached the point where it's like, we can't sustain what this is. And so that'll be fascinating to look back and then see if this was the actual, like, inflection point. Health relationships, sexual health, addiction. So I will be honest with you, there's a, there's a lot to cover. There's a lot of interesting conversations and projects and things that can happen here. We have a half a year with them to go through all of this, and it is, it is tough. I mean, this is my 26th year, and I, I still don't feel like to have the pacing perfect. It always changes. It's just difficult. So, you know, there's a lot in here. It's an important class. I could sell you on making that a year-long class very easily, and we still probably would not have time to do everything the way that we want. So the important thing, right, they, they can see that. The kids feel, especially at this age, I can see how this is going to impact my life. Right, I want more, I want less stress, I want more happiness. So what are the things that, it's simple, but what are the things that actually make me happy? And am I spending my time on them or not? And if not, why not, right? If certain relationships aren't making you happy, why haven't I done anything about that? And what, what do I do? Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. For the selectives and P E, are those individual classes?
They're individual classes. So you sign up for that class, and you have it for a semester.
Wow, neat. Thank you.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I was not clear about that. And then also in the health and wellness class, so I give my upperclassmen the opportunities to interview adults in the building. So essentially, they get to choose, they'll, you know, they'll sit down in groups, and they'll rainstorm, and then I'll reach out to a number of adults, and they might do you know, four, five, six interviews throughout the course of the semester. But that adult is coming in and is, it's basically no holds barred. Ask me anything you want to ask me, and if it's not going to get me fired, I'll answer it. And so there's a lot of really real conversations that happen there. But one of the things that kids really take away, which I'm always hoping they do, is that life has a lot of twists and turns. And so whatever path they think they're going to head out on, it will probably change, and that's okay. Most of us who ended up where we ended up, they didn't plan on that. I didn't plan on this when I was 14 years old. So I think it's important for 17, 18-year-olds to start thinking about that a little bit. And this needs like the, the paths that sum up really well for them. Last year, we hosted a happiness panel. So there's a teach-in, and we've been asked to do some stuff for the teach-in, and so I asked my class what they felt would be interesting to do. Tim Bowen was retiring last year, and so they wanted to revolve some of the power around Tim. And so I think I have a picture of it, but we, we, they gathered the adults that they wanted to be on the panel, and I was, I emceed it, and they gave me questions, my class can move the questions. We had up to 100-something people into the. We had up to a hundred something people into the lecture hall. And uh, the reflections we got back was that was a really meaningful thing to hear adults talk about their own level of happiness. And that it's not always perfect and that there's struggles that we all have and what that looks like for real. And that was a, um, I got a lot of feedback there. We need to continue that on some level. It was good, it was a good experience. All right, let's talk fitness testing. So, sorry, so what I gotta do? This is where I'm at. For my, for my Christmas presents this year, my wife thought it'd be funny to gather family and friends and have all of them just buy me little neck things for me. So that was all for Christmas. I got fifteen neck things for my, my readers. All right, so essentially, I wanna try to walk you through this the easiest way possible. So if you take a look at the data, you can see that in twenty-two, twenty-three, it was what it was. And then twenty-three and twenty-four, there was a dip in some stuff. Participation, especially in the people that are passing all four tests. And that was when we started to dig into what just happened here. Why did those numbers show up the way they did? Didn't used to look like that. And that was when we discovered that the state of Connecticut, even though they told us we can measure any class we want, that when we send the data into them, they measure against the number of sophomores in your building and the sophomore standards, no matter what you do. And so there's a lot of schools who are measuring seniors for obvious reasons. Because if you understand they're gonna measure against the sophomore data, you're gonna crush it. And so we are up against a lot of factors that, I will be honest with you, are not, not that we don't care, but we have built our program to revolve around students' health and wellbeing. And we are working on the fitness testing thing, but uh, it is not the end-all and be-all of our, our program. And since we only see the freshmen as a whole group, that's when we test them. But we have made some changes now that we understand that. And that has made it, that's made a difference. Uh, so you can take a look, you can see that the participation rate, you know, was in the eighties. Um, there's, there's some reasons for that. We discovered that there's some schools who actually don't sign up for PE as freshmen, even though we thought we saw all of the kids. And so this year I've been working with guidance that actually have the names. I think there's sixteen to eighteen kids who are not signing up for PE. I don't, we have to talk about how we're gonna handle that. I think it's a weird thing to just bring kids in during study hall and fitness testing or whatever. I know schools do that. So we're trying to, we are brainstorming what's the best mechanism to do that with the students who are in PE. Yeah, we've discussed all sorts of options. So um, you can also see that in twenty-three, twenty-four, really a thirty-five percent of our students test, pass all four assessments to the level of what's considered acceptable. That was low for us in that however they measure this score that they give you, that, that hurt us. And so our score dropped and uh, Sharon emailed me and like, what's going on? And I was like, I don't know. And so that, that caused a lot of, the, on the bright side, it caused a lot of the changes that have been made that have led to some pretty extraordinary changes in a year. Um, you can see that as of last year, that jumped up to about fifty-six percent of students tested past all four, which is a pretty high number. Now, I wanna give you some background on this. Because when I did some digging into the twenty-three, twenty-four data with other schools, how they were reporting things, that thirty-five percent, I, I needed some context and I was like, what does this mean? What does thirty-five percent mean? What does fifty-six percent mean? So, so when I went looking at it, at, at, in the twenty-three, twenty-four data, thirty-five percent passing all four put us at eight hundred and eighty-three out of twelve hundred and fifty-one schools who sent in data. So we were not in a good spot in terms of that. Now, that being said, if you look at this data, it's wild. And the fact that it's being passed off, the way that it is to use and measure schools is nuts. And I'll give you some examples. So when you look at the participation rate, you would think that there's a maximum participation, participation rate of a hundred percent of humans. But that's not at all the way things play out on the data. So there's a number of schools that has reported a hundred and ninety percent of participation rate. Darian High School had a hundred and eighty-nine percent participation rate. And so these numbers then get put together to come up with an ultimate number. My point is that this is not good data, right? And if you look at some of the, the schools that are reporting, ninety-nine percent of their students are passing all four fitness tests. That can possibly be better. It just can't be. So it is what it is, that's not my concern. But I just wanna give you some context of what some of the numbers look like when you dig into it. But anyway, so if you take the fifty-six percent of students that pass all four and you, you put it back in that spot, that puts us about four hundred out of twelve hundred and fifty-one, which is a huge significant jump. So in one year, we made a significant jump uh, there. So I don't know what that will look like when it comes out with the, whatever number they give us. But that was, you know, a twenty percent jump moved us up quite a bit. Yeah.
So I do understand how like it gets messed up the way the state does it.
Yeah.
Oh, do we, do we know what the numbers are for like, for curl ups or push-ups and all those? What, so what's the passing rate?
Yeah.
So we know, and then when we send them the data, but we know how many freshmen took it. So we can, could we do it for ourselves just so we, we know, we would know what percentage?
Yeah, oh, and I'll send you all the stuff. You're welcome. Yeah, we can.
No, I have to say.
But that, but that gives us, we, we actually have a data of how many pass certain standards. You're right, but we could take our own standard and say we have.
So we know what they're doing here, we don't have to correct anything.
And in fact, I'm gonna give you some numbers in a little bit. One, one of the things that we have decided to do is have kids set their own goals. And they're usually higher than whatever the passing standard is. And you'll see that over the last year, that's worked really well in terms of giving them. If you just give me a number, it doesn't mean anything. But if you have to think about something and like shoot for something, I'm gonna work towards it a little bit more. And it's uh, I don't know if you wanna call it emotional manipulation or good motivation, but that has worked well.
Yeah, so the changes that have happened between the twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five, is that solely just in reporting or is that also an instruction?
It's both.
Okay.
Yeah, so I maybe should have done this first, but I, I was gonna basically walk, walk through what you've made and what changes have been made.
Yep.
That cloud that, so I have no other numbers, you can sort of see that there was improvement across the board. Right? We made some significant improvements in terms of how many people pass push-ups and whatever else. Again, but if you go back to the twenty-three, twenty-four data, you measure against how many sophomores we had in the building. So I sent them the number of freshmen and the freshman class was like thirty people smaller than the sophomore class. They basically just took the sophomore numbers and engaged zeters every, every area that didn't make sense. And so the data is skewed and it doesn't, you can't really take away from it. No, but you can't take away that we have improved, so I guess.
But we, but we could actually calculate what ours was.
We could, yeah, we could. It doesn't help us on the, in the sense that Sharon gets sent a number and then that gets sent around to the state to measure how good of a school leadership is. And so you were trying to play the game so that uh, the data from like going across the board. Now that I understand it better, I think schools didn't understand. I reached out to a lot of teachers when I started learning this and I reached out to some of the state leaders. And one of the state leaders was embarrassed to admit how they do the data because he knows that doesn't make any sense. Like that's not gonna hold up.
And they had made that change.
Yeah. That, oh, they told you they made that.
Well, they, well, they did. I mean, our numbers this year reflected the actual last number tested.
So that's gonna be a game changer for us. Our numbers are gonna look significantly different as a result of us actually getting the data based on the kids that we tested. Right? Uh, so what, what changes were made based on what we found out? So last year, I'll try to move through this quickly. So uh, we might ravel back and Taylor Hall upon our, are basically our freshman PLC. And I, I'm in there with them. And so we brainstormed like, how can we do this in a way that makes sense for us? So that it's meeting what we wanted to do, but also works with our curriculum and what we say is important. So we came up with a few different things. One, uh, Taylor came up with the idea that just basically every standard we give them is sophomore or more. We don't even give them the freshman standards because they're not measuring the freshman standards. And so we're essentially holding them to higher standards. And that's actually worked really well, right? They're gonna, they're gonna meet you where, where you're at. And so if we ask them for a little more, they'll give us a little more and that's what's started happening. Uh, we've also had them doing personal goal setting. So some of the stuff that you're looking at here, this is, uh, Taylor basically used their goal. I don't know if you've ever been to like a grocery store and they show you how much of the fundraising they've met. She had them color in their thermometers based on their goal and how much of their goal they'd reached. So they, you know, uh, the freshmen are coloring in their thermometers, but that's also working well. And then we also have our fitness royale. They're all hip-hop people. And so up on the board, they earn points for their class based on their fitness test scores. At the end of the semester, a class got to have a celebration. So it's uh, this is what we're doing. But it has worked, uh, I'll tell you, it has worked really, really well in terms of not just the scores, but how this is playing out, right? And how, what it feels like in class, um, you know, it's, it fits more with what we are looking for it to feel like, which is I wanna improve at something, I wanna get better. And we're, you know, we're dangling carrots in a way that we weren't before, now that we understand what we're after. Um, and so the state, uh, as Sharon said a minute ago, has also told us that they are not actually gonna start measuring the correct classes. And that will not just change our scores, but it will change other schools' scores as well. It might be worse for us, it's gonna be good for us and maybe not be for others.
Well, and what I, what I appreciate about that is, and one of the things that I think we were committed to not shifting is, you know, Earl and his department have created a program that meets the needs of kids and that's grounded in goals surrounding lifelong fitness. And so, you know, this, this is not a haphazard plan put in place. And so, you know, when we were first discussing the state's rationale for what they were doing, it was, okay, well, how do we change and what do we do? What do we have to change and what we do to comply with the fact that they weren't calculating their numbers the way that they were doing it? And it seemed to fly in the face of what, you know, the department has put together that we're committed to is being right and good for kids. So.
I appreciate you saying that.
I, I think.
And I appreciate your support about us finding a way forward with this that still allows us to have a program that we've built. Um, yeah, I don't know if I would wanna be a part of a program that doesn't look out for what, you know, what the kids' future looks like. It's, fitness testing is fitness testing, it's a small piece of overall health. Yeah, and I appreciate, I appreciate you saying that and your support. So our twenty-five, twenty-six goals in the department, we've got a few different things going on as far as health goes. Uh, we're still working on the, the fitness testing piece. We've made some changes in a year, but this is gonna be ever-evolving. And so what does it look like to continue down this road? Taylor Hall came up with this year that they're setting that goal, they're coloring it, they're coloring the thermometers. And what she found is that ninety-five percent of her students improved in the fitness score and ninety-two percent of them so far have met goals. That's semester one, right? We got another semester coming, but that was a pretty significant number. And so just the idea of having them set the goals for themselves and keeping track of it seemed to positively impact the outcome. Um, and Katie Dobrath, who does our outdoor pursuits class, has been meeting with Bill actually quite a bit. Has been really helpful in terms of like, all right, what can this look like? Uh, there's all sorts of new and exciting things happening in that class as well. So, you know, we bought, uh, we wrote a grant and got snowshoes and we actually have snow now. We didn't think we'd ever use it again. And now we're breaking out the snowshoes. So there's, there's all sorts of stuff that's happening. Some classes revolve around like you're signing up to go outside, you know, unless someone's gonna get really sick, we're going outside. Right? So you're bringing hats and gloves and we're gonna snowshoe and we're gonna hike and we're gonna do this and stuff. Uh, and then health, we have been working on unit guides. So the last couple of years, it's really been about figuring for us, aligning our objectives to the state's standards in a way that we feel like is reasonable for kids. The language that the state gives us, I do not feel like is a language a human would speak. I'm not gonna pass it on to the kids and say, here's what you need to learn, even though it doesn't make sense and you can't understand it. So we need to sort of, to take that down into real human language. What does this mean and why does it matter? And that's, that's where we've gotten our objectives from. So we've been working on that for the last couple of years and now those have turned into unit guides. So essentially what's happening, this is true for PE as well, but the students can go on before we start any unit. The objectives are there. Here's the three, four, five things that we're after when this is over. And here's the assessments. And in some cases, here's a bunch of assessments we can do and I'll even have my classes choose. What do you wanna, what assessment do you wanna do? It's all gonna get to the same place, what are you interested in? Um, and then usually there's a point total. We're gonna be in a range of this many points when it's over. And so those are what the unit guides look like. Uh, and then we're also, my whole department is doing the second semester uh, phone pilot in all of our offices. So we've got the things hung up. The math department gave us a whole bunch of extra calculator cases. We cut up some um, air conditioning um, cushion and put it in between and the kids are off. It's gone remarkably, well, in our department so far. This could be a game changer and I'm sure you'll be hearing from us about potential full school policy changes because it's different, it's just different when the phone, not just that the kid's off the phone, but when the phone's away, if that makes sense.
Yes.
It's a different mentality and I've noticed it already in a couple of weeks. And yeah.
Yeah, how have students responded to the use of unit guides? Have you seen improvement?
Yeah, so one of our, our help goals is collecting information on that. It's sort of like, okay, we're, we're bringing this to you, we're giving this to you. Are you finding it beneficial? Um, and, and is what we're doing with the unit guides working or do we need to do something else? So we're collecting data on that now. I would say in a totally, I don't know, you know, I mean, it's there. I, I, I go over the objectives and then we're, we're at the end. I'm like, all right, did we get here, right? Um, could I do it without that? Yeah, probably, but I think it's nice. I mean, on a personal level, I think it's nice to show them where we're going and what we're finishing with. And we weren't doing that before. So I don't know, if you ask a seventeen-year-old, they would say it's probably fine. I don't know how excited they're gonna be about it. But I would say that it's been good for us. And even it's been good for us as a department to go through and make sure. And this, this'll change, right? Our uniforms will evolve and assignments will, will change, but I don't know, it's just, they do it. And I may be like, need more data at the end of the year, like actual hard numbers.
Thank you.
Uh, wellness stuff, so obviously our department is about wellness. Uh, we find it enjoyable to get out and do things, to go for hikes, right? So we have a staff pickleball all day. On Mondays, I take staff members who are available out to the MCC before it becomes a mat house at about four-thirty or five at night. And that has just grown and it's become so much fun. We send out all sorts of emails and it's just been great. And it's been out there with us, it's, it's, it's been a lot of fun. So that's, that's a thing that we do. Obviously, we are a big part of Field Day and grit and wit that comes in and does that. And the foundation helps, helps us pay for that. Um, the school's been really supportive of that. Lindsay Helly helps out. We do wellness sessions during some of our staff PE stuff. Uh, we'll get together and do different things where our volleyball class will play them. Varsity volleyball team after PE classes versus a sports team after school or whatever, just things that are fun. Uh, we have ECSU interns who come in and do, run lessons. They get some, um, you know, some valuable experience in the classroom. It's good for us as well. We're training future teachers that way. Cass is at Eastern right now, so that connection is, is easy to walk through. Um, and then, you know, the PE activities we do, the happiness and all the teaching stuff, different stuff that we did. And like I said, we are now starting up, as of once the weather gets warm, we're gonna have a Wednesday student pickleball club. And some of the adults in the building have already, have been out. There's already some conversation going on between students and staff. We're playing each other in pickleballs, that'll be fun. Okay, is anyone have any questions?
Yes. Excuse this question, but when you are helping the students to set their goals, you know, like I remember this many decades ago, that I had to be able to do twenty-five push-ups or I would fail the, I won't tell you one year.
Well, the problem is the fitness testing is still the same as the year that you took that.
It's really, yeah.
Yeah.
So I really appreciate, I mean, I would love to be in your class if I were, you know, if you could do it for adults, it would be wonderful. But.
I'm tired of playing, I'm tired of playing.
But I'm wondering how one helps people to set their personal goals with this thing in the mind and also looking at how everybody's budget that they, that's given.
Yeah, no, it's true. It's, it's, yeah, a hundred percent that's happening.
Yeah, people are, oh, we all look good, you know? But I love the idea of, um, you know, having the students set their goal so that they feel empowered because they, they do better, okay? But how do, how does one discuss this with them, that there stays standards and?
I mean, we discuss it just like I discuss it with you. I mean, we sit them down and we're just honest with them. Here's how the state measures it, here's why we do it with you guys as freshmen. Here's what the standards are, right? Here's what the standards are, right? Some people are going to, right, love it and some people aren't. And, you know, um, everybody's motivation is different. I mean, we'll get a baseline, we'll get baseline stuff with them. So while we're warming up for classes, some days we're doing pushups, some days we're doing club, some days we're doing sit and reach or foam rolling or whatever. And we're giving them an opportunity to try and sort of see where things are at. So here's like passing, here's like what an awesome standard is. Let's warm up and try it out and see where you're landing. And then it's like, okay, once I've done that a couple of times, I get an idea of like where I might want to go. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So it usually looks something like that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right. Next up is Matt Pagnello from Ag Ed, our department is for agricultural education.
Hi, everyone. How's it going? Happy to be here to talk to you about Ag Ed. Um, Earl and Billy, you guys have a couple of presentations to go after, so thanks for that. I think I can handle it. So I want to talk about the Ag Ed program a little bit. Uh, I'm not sure how familiar you guys are with the Ag Ed program. Every ag program across the country is based off of a three circle model. And three parts, the circle, they all fit into a really nice N diagram. We have classroom slash laboratory and that's what students are doing here in the building during the day. They're learning different skills. They're trying new opportunities. They're working with each trouble, with each other, problem solving and doing that kind of stuff. The second part of this is the supervised agricultural experience or SAE. And this is an outside of school, 100% student-centered endeavor. And I'll talk about that more later. It's a really big part of the, of being in the Ag Ed program. And it's, uh, gives students the opportunity to take the skills they're learning in class and apply it to a real world setting. Um, and the SAE has been around for all, over 100 years at this point. And there's a lot of value in the SAE. And it's one of the things that as a department, we really focus on to push through further SAE. And I'll talk about this more later in my slides. And then we have the FFA, which is the Youth Leadership Organization. So all students across the country that are enrolled in agriculture education programs do become FFA members. So across the country, there's over a million FFA members. It's the largest youth organization in the country. And there's a lot of opportunities for students. Leadership, personal growth and career success are really kind of the, um, the three objectives of the FFA organization. And then we have some photos here of students in class doing, uh, different skills. We have students in the greenhouse. We have some students working with animals. The next slide I want to talk about is just some, uh, some information that the state gathers. So every year, the state requires every program across the state to complete a five-year study. So what we do is we contact students that graduated five years ago. So this information here is based off of the class of 2020. And we do this every single year. The state puts it together. Um, I don't have our data just because it's a really kind of ugly form. And it's really challenging to work through and it's not really easy to present. Uh, but the state does a good job of collecting the information from all the centers and puts it together. There's about 20 centers across the state and there's about 4,000 students enrolled in agriculture education here in Connecticut. So the, the first stat right off the top of your head, over 92% of students who enrolled in ASDE Center as grade nine students graduated from that center. So ag programs have a really high retention across the state. Uh, which just shows you, um, how effective these programs are. 92% of ASDE students who started a degree program, um, earned that degree. So, uh, they stick, we have a higher retention rate in high school. And once they get off to that college level, they, uh, start a degree track and they finish that degree track. 56% have a degree from a four-year college university. So, you know, college is not for every student. There's other tech programs, associate degrees, um, some students go into the workforce. So no matter what their next step is agriculture education, our goal is to prepare them for that next step. 96% of respondents who started a four-year college degree program earned that degree. So again, they're starting that program and sticking with it. And 26% are still in college or another advanced study or training program. So some students are taking longer than those four years. Maybe they did a gap year or two. Um, so 26% are still enrolled after five years of graduating high school. 9% owning business. So that's a really exciting statistic for me. I think there's a lot of, um, benefits to owning a business. And a lot of these students started their businesses while they were in the Ag Ed program as their supervised Ag Ed experience. So that just illustrates, um, some of the skills that students are learning in Ag Ed program while they're with us. And 93% are employed and 20% are employed full-time in an ag-related career. So my next slide talks about our flat sheet rationale. So all students, um, have to apply to the Ag Ed program. That's coming up later in my slides. Once they're accepted into the Ag Ed program and they choose to attend the Ag Ed program, all students go into Ag One. Uh, now there are times where we accept students as 10th graders. Even they go through the Ag Ed year because we feel there's a lot of important, um, skills and knowledge such as safety. We go over the SAE. Students work towards, uh, foundational FFA knowledge. We think that's so important that even those older kids who enter the program go into Ag One so they can get that knowledge and skill. After, at, at the end of that Ag One, Ag One is an exploratory year. So, uh, and students are going to rotate through all four of our content areas. It gives them a chance to engage with the content, see what they like, see what they don't like. And at the end of that first year, they're going to select the content area that they want to focus on for three years. We like the exploratory model. It gives us a chance as teachers to really build a relationship with all students in the program. To me, that's really important because I want to be able to, um, see every kid and know all of their names, um, and say hi to them in the hallway. Uh, that's really important to me and the rest of us. So that's why we like the, having that exploratory model. And we do a really good job to make sure we're really consistent with all, all of our classes. So they all get the same message when it comes to SAE and FFA and the expectations of being in the Ag Ed program. We spend a lot of time on safety, uh, in the Ag One year, no matter which content area it is, whether it's handling animals or working in plant science or in the mechanic shop. Really focus a lot on safety and what are potential careers that you could do in each content area? So that way it helps students kind of set a path that they want to head down. And that also helps them to find out which content area they want to be in. For the most part, that second year, the Ag Two year, um, students are going to focus in that content area. And then once we get into Ag Three is when we start to offer some ECE opportunities. Animal science, we have two half-year courses during that year. Animal behavior and companion animal. Plant science, we have AD vorticulture. And then in turf, we have turf science. So those are all UConn classes and they really give, they're a great opportunity for students, just like all of the other ECE offerings that we have. And then plant science is the only content area that offers two ECE courses during that Ag Four year. So we have, we're very proud of our ECE opportunities. And every student who takes these content areas, they're automatically going to be enrolled into the ECE course as they breeze through. So for animal science, students who take animal science, they're going to graduate here with six ECE credits as long as they earn them. And in plant science, that's seven credits. So students in Ag Ed, they can really, you know, if they wanted to focus on agriculture at the next level, they get a good solid foundation and some good credits to take with them. Should they go on to that college path? I wanted to take some time and really talk about our application process. Last year, our department put a lot of work into revising our application process. And we really want to make sure that students understand the program, understand these expectations because it is a big commitment when you're going to an Ag Ed program. You know, these kids are applying, they're 13 years old. They may not have even gone to a separate school building. And it's a big decision for them to make. We want to make sure they have all the information for them. I think that's really important. And when they come to our informational nights, one of the first things I say is welcome to Ag Ed. In Ag Ed, we do stuff. And then the next thing I usually say is I'm here to give you information. I would really love for all of you guys to apply to the program and want to be in the program. But most importantly, I want to give you information so you can make an informed decision. Just because those two components of the program, the FFA and the SAE, those happen outside of school. So it is a big commitment and I want to make sure that students know that commitment because if they decide they do want to be in the program, I want to make sure they're successful at what they do. So, um, we take several steps in order to make sure our applicants show that they are interested and going to be dedicated to this, to this program and get here. So the state gives every pro, the state has an application that students fill out if they want to attend the Ag Ed program. And within that application, uh, we collect, um, a bunch of records from the students for the previous two years. So that seventh and eighth grade year. Um, we're going to look at transcripts, we're going to look at attendance, academic performance and behavior records. After we look through all that kind of stuff, students also write an interest statement. So there's three questions on the application where students are going to write about, uh, what is their interest? What is their experience in agriculture? What are they going to get out of the program? And how is the program going to benefit from that? So that gives them an opportunity to really sit down and think about, again, how am I going to fit into this and how is it going to help me get to my future goals, uh, before they get here? We add two things last year that we thought would be a good way for us to gather more information on the applicants. Because at the end of all this, we have to make decisions. And as, uh, as the person, as the coordinator of the program, I want to make sure I have enough information on these applicants to make, I know, a good decision. So we have students submit a portfolio and the portfolio has two components to it. One of the components is they have to submit five photos of them demonstrating their interest in agriculture. And write a caption for those photos. And then we have them write an SAE proposal. So we want them to think about what their SAE could be when they get here. So we want them to sit down and come up with a plan. This is what I'm going to do. These are the goals that I want to achieve. My timeline is this. These are the materials I'm going to need. They're not committing to that SAE at that point, but we want to make sure that they're thinking about it and that they know it's a big part of being in the Ag Ed program. After all the written stuff, they come in, they have an interview. And during the interview, we ask them five questions to try to get to know them. And we also have them do a performance task. So what we do is we take about, I don't know, 40 or 50 ag-related items from all different backgrounds. And we put them out on the table and we have them select an item. And they can either sell it to us, demonstrate how to use it, or, um, talk about why it's important to them. Again, to really see what their interest in agriculture is. And then after, after we have all of this information and data on the applicants, they all get ranked. All of these have a certain percentage that, um, a percentage waiting for, for the applicants. And then I sit down with Lou and we review the applicants together. Our goal is to make sure that we're fair and equitable to everyone who is applying.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So how do you, um, some people may have more access to agriculture and some people definitely have less.
Right.
So how do you kind of accommodate that in the admissions?
Yeah. So that's a great question. Um, definitely everyone has different background levels. And we want to, um, you do have students who have been doing four age for a long time. It's really easy for them to, um, talk about their agricultural experience and that sort of thing. But we also want to be fair to students who might not have that access. So our process, this is why we go through the application and the interview and writing their interest statement. So that way they can say, you know, I might not have a lot of experience doing this, but I'm really interested in X and I could really benefit from learning this because. So we, we really want to make sure everyone has the opportunity to, to do that. Yes.
So, um, I kind of flipped ahead a little bit and I saw that you accepted 45 out of the 51 applicants. Is fif, is 45 the capacity of the program? Or is that kind of the, the students who were really interested enough to derive some benefit from the program?
Right. So, um, 45 students we accepted. This, so what we do is we go, we rank everybody in, in a spreadsheet. And it's the students who did not really perform well. You know, maybe they were lacking in, uh, some of their behavior or the academics and that stuff is weighted such a small amount. You know, you're not really going to get ding because you got a couple of Ds in English, you know? But it's really, did you demonstrate your interest in agriculture? And the students, those six who did not get accepted, they really did not demonstrate their interest. From our perspective, we give them plenty of opportunities to do so. And once upon a time, it was gathering all the information and just going off that interest statement. But we added the interview, the performance task, the portfolio to make sure, uh, you know, we can, that we have enough information for them.
So there's enough capacity. If those six had kind of demonstrated, you know, what they needed to demonstrate, there would be capacity for that. Yeah.
Right. So our capacity kind of fluctuates year to year. Um, there's a state statute that says there shouldn't be any more than 35 students per teacher ratio. And then you have a 10% um, kind of slush fund to that. So our capacity with four teachers is 140 students, 10% of that is 14. So our max capacity would be 154. So we go into, uh, when you go to accept students, yes, we're going to accept a little bit more because you are going to have attrition over time. And it could be any reason, um, why students want to leave the program or the school. And if that's the case, and I sit down with students just to try to, you know, did you talk to your parents? Did you talk to your guidance counselor? I want to make sure you've thought about this because it is a final decision. And, you know, some students leave just because the previous school they went to was small and Neo Smith is a relatively larger high school and they're just not comfortable here. You know, it wasn't the program, wasn't the teacher, there wasn't this, it was, you know, it just wasn't a good fit sometimes. So, um, students could leave for, um, you know, any reason. Did I answer your question?
That's great.
Okay. Um, so I just, I also have the recruiting timeline on here. Uh, when August comes around, I'm already thinking about the application process and, and, uh, the getting everything together. We get our recruiting materials. We make initial contact with our attending school guidance counselors. I think we have eight or nine schools that we contact in our area. We're the designated ag center for, um, Mansfield, Wellington and Ashford. Columbia has the option and Coventry and Wyndham. So we are their designated ag center. So we contact all of those guidance counselors and we set up recruiting visits. So I go out on all the recruiting visits. I go to the middle schools. Sometimes it's a college fair style. Sometimes it's a presentation. But I go and, you know, just try to be excited and upbeat and, uh, we have some informational sessions. So that's what I really try to sell. You know, I can only do so good talking about the program. I want you to come to the school and I want you to see it. So we offer those two informational programs. We go over what do we expect from you if you come to the Ag Ed program? And we also fill in the department. So those are really two important dates that I feel. And when I go, that's what I'm selling because I want people to come and see the program. We have a really hard deadline as far as applications are concerned. This year was December 5th. Again, we want to be really fair and equitable to everybody. So everyone has to go through this process in the same timeline. So we have a hard deadline as far as applications are concerned. We, the staff, um, all four of us, we review all of those materials. And then we interview the applicants in that January timeframe. And then, uh, just today I sent out our decisions to those students who applied. So it's a really exciting time for some kids. We bumped the timeline way up by a month. And now that students can let us know whether or not they're going to come to the school. They can come to the open house on February 19th. That's something they kind of missed out on in the past. But it's good for them to come out and see the school, uh, more than just the Ag Ed program. What are all the other clubs and offerings and opportunities here at our school? And then we also let them know that you'll be contacted by guidance counselor here to set up your schedule for, um, your grade night here. Should you choose to come here? This is the application that I got this year. Again, this varies from year to year. Sometimes you get a lot of kids from one town. Sometimes you get a few kids from one town. It kind of ebbs and flows, um, as far as interest is concerned. So Ag for this year was six, that was really high. Cause in the past several years, I've gotten maybe two or three match, open match. So they kind of roller coasters, uh, from town to town. On the next slide, this is our PSIF report. So every year by October, on October 1st, we take a snapshot of how many students are in the Ag Ed program. We submit this off to the state. This number determines the funding that we are going to get the following year. So on October 1st this year, we had 120 students enrolled in the program. And also here is a breakdown of number of, uh, participants from each town. And our Ag Ed center, we only have full-time participants here. Some schools, like the Sound School, they have, uh, part-time participants where the students go to the center for half a day and then back to their high school for half a day, which seems like a, uh, nightmare for the facility, but luckily we're all full-time students. All right. I want to talk about the SAE and the FFA before I wrap up my presentation here. Again, the SAE is really bringing the skills you're learning in class and applying to a real world setting. It is truly student-centered. Students come up with their own project that's hopefully geared toward their interest. Maybe they want to learn a lot about composting and they can have an SAE that's related to composting. Students are going to create their own project. They're going to write a plan for it, sit down and think about what's my timeline? What are my materials? Can I actually pull this off? And then after they write a plan, they're going to set goals for themselves. They're going to have a timeline and they're, they are actually going to do this project. If I say I am going to start a lawn mowing business, I'm going to do all the business planning ahead of time. I'm going to think about my financials. I'm going to think about, oh snap, I don't have a mower. What am I going to do? How am I going to get one? But then I'm actually going to go out and do this. I'm going to go out and mow. I'm gonna go out and mow my four lawns this week. I'm gonna record my income and my expenses. And I'm actually going out there and doing the work. And then I'm gonna reflect on everything that I've done. So this is truly student-centered textbook example of education. We have students in all of these different content areas here. Just because they're in plant science does not mean they have to have a plant science SAE. They can explore pretty much any topic in the field of agriculture. So it's a great opportunity. It's meant to be personalized and independent and we put a lot of emphasis on the SAE. Students start their SAE actually yesterday. And as far as that Ag One group is concerned, we start them off for semester two. We spend the end of semester one. All four of us teachers, we meet with every student independently multiple times in order to make sure they know what the expectations are and to give them feedback on the plans that they're making. We do have, you know, Connecticut State Labor Laws that we do need to follow because some students work places for their SAE. We want to make sure they're in safe and productive learning environments. So we go out as teachers and we go out and visit the students at their SAE. We interview them, we interview their employer, if there is one, and give them feedback on their SAE. So we spend a lot of time to make sure they have a really, really strong footing with the SAE that Ag One year. And make sure they know what is expected and what's good and what's not. And yes, it is a process and sometimes students have a really, really great plan. But we have, you know, it's not something that's approvable. And, you know, one thing that's really kind of amazing about this is a student, it's not approvable for them to work for a tree trimming company, for example. But it's perfectly legal for them to start their own tree trimming company. Not that we really push the whole tree trimming thing, but, it's, it's just kind of crazy how all those labor laws works. And you don't have to work somewhere. You can do research at home and, you know, conduct a science experiment. There's so many different things that you can do for an SAE. But those students who are working somewhere, we want to make sure they're in good, safe, productive places. Yes.
Thank you. So I noticed here that there's also volunteering for five oh one C three businesses. And so I was curious like kind of which ones were, or the students were involved in? If, if that was one of the options that the current board has.
So the five oh one C three, again, that's one of those laws. If you're gonna volunteer someone, it does need to be a five oh one C three. It's really the animal rescues and shelters that are really popular around here. I know in Ashford, there's the, the cat sanctuary. There's, um, there's Pets Farm where they have a rescue and a few other rescues that are in our area that seem to be pretty popular with, with students.
So then I also have a suggestion of Grow Wyndham.
Oh, yes, that's another one, yes.
Right, so I was wondering if there was a partnership? Because that seems like a really natural, literally organic partnership.
Yes, it is. We do have students working at Grow Wyndham. We have students volunteering at Grow Wyndham. And any excess greenhouse crops that we produce here at the school, we also offer that up to Grow Wyndham as well. So Grow Wyndham is a great opportunity and we enjoy going to the garden and seeing students, our students working there. All right, my last slide for tonight is the FFA, the Leadership Organization that focuses on career success, personal growth. And the one other thing I'm blanking on right now, there's a lot of opportunities for students with the FFA. Students engage with the FFA as much as they would like. Okay? So that could be many different levels. Maybe it's doing a CDE, a career development, development event, which is a competition that focuses on a certain content area. So there's three of them up here on the board. There's twenty-four other ones. We have horse judging where students are going out and evaluating horses. Okay? I can't tell you what evaluating horses is all about, but, we have students who go out and compete on that. So they, they take a lot of time in preparing for the CDE and the different skills that you would use in that career. So for example, forestry, that's another CDE. Here's our four students here. They placed first in the state in November. So they're gonna be competing at nationals in the fall. So you guys will see me again in June to get that field trip approved. And then livestock judging is another one that we have. The CDs are divided up between spring and fall. So the spring ones have not happened yet. That's why when we see the fall CDs here. Some other opportunities is leadership conferences that are put on by the State Connecticut FFA Association. So students from all twenty centers across the state will go to this conference and work on leadership skills and relationship building and networking and that kind of thing. And if you really want to see the FFA in action, I highly recommend coming to the State Convention, the State Convention here at Yukon and May. So no one paid me to say that, but I want you guys to know just because it's right here in our backyard. That's my presentation.
Thank you. I just want to add that Matt and his, and his team worked during the summer going out and meeting with students and meeting with them and supervising their SAEs as well. So their work does not end. And that is a, a constant process for them. That extends throughout the whole year, so.
Definitely.
It's a labor of love and it, and it does not end.
Right.
And all of our numbers were correct, so I was able to sign and send that grant back. So now we'll be in the process of submitting our purchase orders and the things that we need to be reimbursed for the, for all of the purchases and all of the work that we've done since 2013 when we first submitted our very first security grant that had been denied. So that's exciting. We're excited about that. Peter Prouda, who is the gentleman who does our enrollment projections, has been working on that for a couple of months. He has submitted a draft update. You'll actually see the draft numbers for that, even though we're in our budget presentations, that'll be in our budget book. Even though those are just draft numbers, they are actually going to be more accurate than the old numbers that we have. So we did include those, but we'll have a final document ready in the next couple of weeks. Number six on the report talks about our assistant principal search. At the time that I wrote this, prior to the submission of the, the agenda, there were eighty-three applications by the time we actually got to this meeting or to the closing, actually of the application process on Friday, there were ninety-two applications for the position. So that was exciting and exhausting. At the same time, so right this week, we're in the process of paper screening. So we have a committee of folks who are reading through not ninety-two. We were able to go through and kind of riddle down the ninety-two applications to, you know, thirty-one applications that were actually, actually submitted. There were some applications that were put in that weren't actually officially submitted. And there were some applications that just weren't, you know, there weren't complete applications with all the materials that they needed, things like that, things that we could just riddle that number down to to applicants that were, that were feasible. So we're excited for that. Folks who volunteered to, we've had great response on folks wanting to participate in rounds one and two of the application process. We have parents, students, board members and staff, both certified and non-certified, involved in round one and two of the applicant, of the interview process. And then, you know, really the goal is to go from thirty-one to maybe around eight for round one, to maybe four for round two, and then hopefully, you know, two, one or two for a meet and greet session that would be open up to folks, to anyone who would want to participate. So that even expands the participation for stakeholders to be even wider than the folks that we have now. The goal really was the process to be transparent and inclusive to as many folks who want to be involved.
Yeah, I've just gotten some questions from the committee about the process of the interviews. And I directed them to you. I don't know if people have reached out, but if you could just walk through the outreach you did do to get people to serve on the committees and stuff like that.
The outreach was an email to, so we sent an email out to all the parents, all students, all staff, invited them to participate. So anyone who filled out the survey, we took their responses and then, you know, took a look at what, what their first choices were or what part of the process they wanted to be involved in. There were a lot of people who wanted to be involved, so we just had to kind of make some decisions on, you know, a couple of representatives for each. So that was basically the process.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I know you did extensive outreach, so I just wanted to make sure that was out there.
Thank you.
Sharon?
Yes.
Did you share the job posting again?
Sure.
Did you, did you share it originally? I can't remember.
Do you share the job posting with?
With the board?
The board, yeah.
It's on our website, but I can share it with you directly.
Okay.
That would be good.
Thank you.
What we're asking, right?
Well, that's, that's why.
Yeah, so actually, when, when we are, yeah, when we're going through the process and actually just, I met with Dave Tanner today too about, yes, we had a really great suggestion. The plan was to share a job, the job description.
Yes.
Huge. It's bigger than just the, the posting. The postings riddled down a little bit, but the job description is ginormous. And so one of the things that we discussed was maybe creating a one-pager that really kind of captures vision of the candidate as it relates to kind of the knowledge, skills and dispositions.
I think that'd be really helpful, especially since there have been times when we've discussed, like shifting the role a bit. So I think that'd be helpful.
Some specific, you know, there's some specific qualities, especially with, you know, you all, you'll see on the consent agenda, which will come up next, we have some resignations and some pretty significant positions that we're going to need to fill, but there's overlap and some skill gaps that we're going to need to, it's going to be difficult to fill that place as we move forward. So we'll be really thoughtful about how we're going to do that. So absolutely, we will build. And that'll be a part of the actual interview process. We'll ask all of the folks who are on those pages to review
Good.
the, the job description or that one pager, which will be a little more valuable. You're going to see attached on number seven, Deborah had asked for an updated list of educational acronyms. So I used some of my, my knowledge and some of my good old friend AI to put together a, it's a not all-inclusive list. We will continue to add to this. So as some of these come up, we'll add to this list of acronyms just to kind of keep us going. Even like today, I think I'm going to add in our acronyms for CC, college and career. We talked a lot about the classic designations. So college and career, we talk a lot about.
SAE.
SAE, which I, you know, Matt did a great job. Yeah. There's so many, but things that we can just add to this list as we go through. We'll just kind of make this a working list. And then the last piece is a memo for Virginia Walton, who has been absolutely amazing. And you've read that on the back of the memo, giving an update on the composting of washable food serviceware outcomes. She was just amazing in helping to get this moving forward, working with Mariah, Papuski Tilly, who's our food services director, also an amazing human, in really getting us to what we, what we thought might be really difficult to do at the high school level. You know, along with Lou and with our, with our students, have really made light work of shifting to metal trays, metal utensils, really becoming a lot more sustainable and then composting. And so this information is really encouraging. The grant was, was amazing and they really got us started. Ginny really got us started down that road and helped to fund that work. So we're really, really grateful. I'm super grateful for her, for sharing the good news and excited to share with you all. So that is getting more in my report.
All right, any questions? All right, then we'll move forward to the consent agenda. Assuming that people have taken a look at, at the reference items, I would entertain a motion to approve consent agenda.
You usually ask if there's anything needs to be removed.
Anything need to be removed from the consent agenda?
There are number day corrections that need to be done on the minutes. I don't know whether that's, you know, gets the bar, but it's there's at least three twenty-fives that need to be punched in the minutes.
And there's a correction to one of our students' names, two minutes. Okay, so we'll pull the minutes and then, then we'll make a motion. All right, all right. With the minutes removed, motion to approve consent agenda. Second, Oregon, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Right. So can we go back to the item in the minutes? What, what needs to be? Motion to amend.
Motion to amend under students' report, Fabio's, Fabio de la Shared Brief Updates. It didn't have his full complete name. It's just we need to add in their.
The, yeah, the one.
Faith actually is in this place.
Yes, that's.
In the business for the.
Yeah.
I had it written, but this one's.
Do we have to hold on every amendment?
No, just we can start all together.
All right, other amendments then.
Yeah, just my concern that about the ad hoc committee. Meant, is it public and getting some clarification on that because it's reflected as not open, public?
Right, which Sharon and I actually talked about that earlier. It's, it's a committee, it's not a committee that makes decisions. It's just working on, it's advisory, advisory. So, and while it's not closed to the public, it's not one that we don't think requires all the bells and whistles of another committee.
According to Robert's rules, it's a, it's a, what's the word? So it's allowable for it not to be open to the public when it's an, when it's an advisory and when it's advisory in nature. When there's no decisions being made, you're just advising the board. From an F O I perspective, it gets a little pushy. I think where we're safe in that is that we did post it and there are minutes.
It was posted.
Oh, yeah, the, the meeting was posted and there are minutes posted for us as well. I think moving forward, we'll have to figure out how we want to maneuver that moving forward to have it open to the public. I think we just have to have a discussion. I think the committee should have a discussion about what we want that to look like.
Yeah, I would suggest maybe that if, if, at the point when that topic needs some decision, either it transfers to the finance committee, right, from that perspective, if that's the right vehicle or the whole board can just kind of move its, the, the context of it or the venue, we'll say.
Right.
If indeed it grows out of that advisory facet, it needs to make something rather than getting a bit more formal. We have enough other vehicles and venues, I think, to make, to have it said.
Yeah, so it's on page thirteen of the packet. The only concern I have is just in the nature, the way it was created. It wasn't that information would be sent to the finance committee, that it would report back to the board. That's how I thought it was brought up as a committee. And just in our bylaws, it doesn't mention an advisory form for an ad hoc committee. So I guess if it was posted, I don't know, I just, I have concern voting in favor of minutes that same meeting isn't open to the public. I, especially with Boya being a little questionable.
If it's not in the bylaws, if it's covered under Roberts, then if you don't have specific bylaws for it, that's the overarching set of rules. I mean, you can't do when this committee procedurally is officially felt on anything of its advisory, like you can't hold a, handle a vote in that ad hoc then break. It's just going to have to be a, yes, it's a good idea and moving forward, you can't actually have an official vote.
Any further discussion on that?
Well, I guess we had discussed in, in our ad hoc committee that we really would like for us all to have a a really good understanding before it's presented. And, you know, I, I would like for us to be able to form some, some ideas before the public comes back and asks us a lot of questions. I mean, I think questions are great, but you know, I'm not sure this is easy for everybody to understand what the purpose is.
Yeah, but we're not actually voting on that.
Maybe we can make that discussion topic because this is about minutes, right?
Right, this is about the minutes. So that could come up under, yeah, under discussion.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the language which is here is exactly what we voted to adopt. So it is correct in the minutes. What we approved.
For that topic.
Okay. Give you that.
Under. Yeah, under policy, a meeting is scheduled for January twenty-ninth. I assume that's meant to be twenty-sixth and then curriculum is the same.
Oh, in the beginning, in the, in the, on the first page?
Yes.
On page one? Yeah.
I assume on the next page, under following amendments for the Board of Education meeting of January sixth, twenty-sixth would be.
So hard to shift.
Oh, yeah.
No.
No doubt. That's all the ones I've found.
So the amendments include those date corrections?
Yeah, I, I can make the motion.
Okay.
Just don't worry. Move that the states for the policies committee meeting be corrected to state January twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-sixth. And the date for the curriculum meeting be corrected to state January eighth, twenty-twenty-sixth. At the reference on consent agenda to the Board of Education meeting of December, January, oh, January sixth, twenty-twenty-five, be corrected to January twenty-sixth. And that the, in the students' report that we include the Fabio's full name. So Janice started a motion, never got a second. You made, you made a motion initially for the, for Fabio's last name.
Yeah, I thought, well.
It was, it's just hanging. So is someone, you need to just pull.
You can just officially withdraw.
Bring to my.
Friendly amendment, yeah. I thought he said that in the beginning, so I said, but thank you, yeah.
And Sarah seconded that. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the amended minutes? Is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Think is opposed and abstentions? All right. All right. Under new business, there is a need to have a very brief executive session. We just have to.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's old business.
Old business.
Yeah, no, old business.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it was just because of the way that the days were counted between August and September. It had August had three days instead of two and September had twenty days instead of twenty-one. So that just really changed on the, on the calendars. But we just, we do each, we do the updated calendar to reflect that.
Okay, need a motion to approve the amended calendar for the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh school. Okay, Janice, make second.
So hang on.
Yes.
The one that's attached.
Yeah.
The one that's attached. It's got three days of August.
Yes.
At the top and twenty days of September. You said, the old one had two, the new three, and the new one has seventeen.
Correcting the number of instructional days of three days, oh, yeah, in August, three days instead of two. I said it backwards. I'm sorry. No, you're correct. You're right. I said it backwards.
Okay.
Yeah, we just, we got a little.
Any further discussions? All those in favor of approving the calendar as amended, is anybody saying aye? Aye, opposed, abstentions? All right, that's approved. All right. New business, there's a need to have a brief executive session, but they need to have a motion, a second, at least two-thirds of the body in order to do that.
Excuse me, do we want to go into discussion? I'd prefer to make sure because then we don't have to come back. If there are extra.
Yeah, we can do that. Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Does anybody have it? Do you want to bring that up?
The.
Why you're concerned.
Yeah, I mean, about the ad hoc, yeah, I, I just think there should be clarity on that. I didn't feel comfortable voting in favor of the minutes with it on there. I think going, as Sarah made a really good point, I think there is value in us discussing, you know, within a committee that isn't necessarily open to the public on what our plan is going forward, you know, for issues like the rolling average. But I would like some consistency as to what the reporting structure is. And if it is to go to like a finance committee, I don't think that's sort of what the role of an ad hoc committee is. It would be referred to the whole board and then go back to finance would is.
I'm sorry.
The perspective.
You said get the, get the whole board and then?
And then for the board to refer it to finance, since the board had created the ad hoc, that's not the structure that was used. And so I don't see it as appropriate to not be public. That was just my perspective on it. So going forward, I think this can very easily be fixed. My concern was just in what was put in the minutes for this. And I think going forward, there won't be any issues as long as we have an open dialogue.
Should the ad hoc report out in the way that the other committees do in the big?
I think that's the nature of how we created the ad hoc. I could be wrong.
Yeah.
I didn't have time. I was going through the minutes of where we approved it. I couldn't find the language of how we approved it. That's why I voted no the way I did because my rec.
In the same way that committed right up.
Right. Since that hasn't happened, then it should, shouldn't necessarily be.
I'm still proposing that it did.
Yeah.
That, that, that does happen, right? So is that, is that begin to
Yes.
address it sort of maybe the transparency or whatever that.
And I think in my head that it already was, but that's not how it had acted, if that makes sense.
The, the last time we discussed this, it was a, a conversation around the idea that there needed to be, that it needed to be posted. Minutes. I think that that was something that you had brought up there.
Yep.
And so, so we did.
I don't know that we can make that and not, I mean, if the public wants to.
Right. And that is my concern of having minutes and then saying it's not public is.
So I guess the, I guess the question is.
That's the issue.
Does an ad hoc committee need to be, if it's advisory in nature, need to be posted? And it does, there need to be minutes when it's, when it is, when it's advisory nature. I think we need to do some research on that.
Yeah, it may be questioned if, if counsel can answer.
I mean, I don't think that there's any secrets that want to be. I don't know. That's not about the secrets about what is, is happening in the meeting. I think it was just what, what the nature of that committee was, which was, you know, informational and information gathering in order to advise the board. So I think what's permissive, because we want to make sure we're following the rules, which is, I think, where you're coming from next.
And, yeah, yeah. And based off of what was said, I didn't have enough clarity on that to feel comfortable supporting.
Nice question. Relative, aside from sort of the rules, is there any perception? I just wanted to get that out there that there's any sort of anything that's like less than transparent.
Yes.
Within, like, okay. Because if, because we did report out, it was sort of maybe whether we sent over that or not, in terms of this, this setting, it wasn't part of the committee updates and, and maybe we may not have gone and dug down and found the minutes and, and not realized that there was a meeting and there was things discussed. So just make sure we're not only trying to follow rules, we're also trying to make sure that there's a perception of openness too.
Yeah, I think we need to be sure. I mean, this is not a caucus.
Yep.
And so we need to be sure if it's got, depending on the number of members, it may be required to be.
Right.
It was homework.
Especially.
Is it appropriate to? Okay, so maybe we should start. I'm looking at the minute, the notes I have. Unless the minutes you have, I didn't see.
No, you're in the packet, yeah.
Yeah, they're in the.
According to Robert's rules in ad hoc advisory, committee meetings are generally closed to the public and restricted to committee members only, as they are not separate entities from the parent body. However, committee is formed by a public agency. They must comply with applicable sunshine laws of the Federal Advisory Committee Act, which often require meetings to be public unless specified exemptions apply. So I think the question is whether or not we are considered a public agency.
I think that's a question probably easily answered by counsel.
I haven't talked to Ken in a while. I think she misses me.
That made you feel better. Procedurally, you did it correctly. I shouldn't have asked, but.
While we were going through that, I mean, this is silly, but while we were going through that little cap retraining, they were talking about, we are actually hired by the state, right? I mean, that's our, you know, according to the laws and we're acting, you know, as the nuders of the state. You know, not this, the region, which is interesting. So I, you know.
But we're not really hired.
No, we're not hired. So we're not a public, you know, yeah. So this is really interesting.
I feel like.
It'll be very interesting to see what council says based off that. That's, that'll be very helpful.
Again, I, I kind of feel like you've been, it's been transparent or at least the minutes.
I agree. The nature of it is a hundred percent transparent. I just want to make sure we're not approving minutes that we shouldn't be approving, and that's why I voted no.
All right, we'll get more information because there may be more times where we need to do that kind of work before we're ready to move on anything.
Right.
In the budget or in the, our board activities.
And it'll be, I think it'll be important even for the next meeting that we have with the additional. Because we talked about that, you know, as to whether or not the, the meeting with the, the towns, the town folks. Whether that is an open meeting, whether it needs to be live streamed or, or not. Yeah, so.
I, I'd rather people have a chance to, the transparency. I know we're all trying to do that. It's not, that's not a problem for me because then, the more times you hear this, the more times I think you, oh, okay. I, and I will not discuss because this is not a time, you know, to move. But I think people will get an understanding of, okay, this is what this is about and this is why they, they post this.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think because we have a working model from another school district, it makes it a whole lot easier for everybody to understand what's going on.
Yep.
This is all about the rolling averages calculations that we're discussing with the other towns at this point. Okay, thank you. Any other discussion items? All right, I'll go back to looking for a motion to go into executive session. To discuss a personnel issue.
Do you want to offer president's statement before you do that? Just finish off the agenda before you move.
We usually do that at the very end of them. I thought we can do that.
I mean, just say.
I don't disagree. I always think it's weird to go into executive session.
You're trying to move.
I try to give them back in.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Yeah, anybody in the public like to say anything at this point?
Real quick though, I do have a board comment before we. I actually, two weeks ago, I ran into Jim. His granddaughter's basketball team, it's my, my daughter's basketball team. And he wanted me to say hi to everybody on the board and any misses coming down. We, I talked to him for a little bit. He's doing, doing well. Despite not being here, but he wanted me to say hi to everybody.
Thank you for that. I felt like he's, he's, he doesn't love us anymore.
I, I've heard from Kim today. She, she said, I told her you did a really great job.
Okay.
And, and some other stuff, but you know, I'm not going to say. And nice stuff. And she said, you guys are going to be great. That's Kim. You know, like she really believes in our school and and I did, I did speak to Jim via text at Christmas, you know, with just all.
Taking a motion to enter your summary session. A second. All right, any discussion about that, just because of the personnel issue? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, abstentions? And we are going back. Good night, you guys.